I'd like to call the village board meeting to order if you would stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance, please.
(inaudible)
All right, thank you and welcome everyone and welcome to everyone watching at home tonight. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Trustee Carter?
Present.
Trustee Mariscal?
Present.
Trustee Kazim?
Present.
Trustee Gett?
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Present.
Trustee DeBoer?
Present.
Okay, again, welcome. Item 4 approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting of July 16, 2019. I'd ask for a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any question or correction to the minutes? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, minutes are approved. Madam Clerk, any correspondence?
No.
Okay, we'll get right into announcements. Honored to have Senator Dave Kaler here tonight along with Representative Jahan Gordon Booth. And we're so fortunate in the village of Peoria Heights to have them not only here tonight, but to have them representing us. They're both recognized throughout the state for their leadership. Dave is now in leadership and has been in the Senate and so is Jahan on the House side. So, we wanted to invite them by because they've been so helpful in the recent announcement by Governor Pritzker of the money of $68.5 million for Galena Road. And they've also been very helpful in facilitating meetings with IDNR and DCEO. So, welcome both of you tonight. We're honored to have you. If you'd come forward and be willing to take a few, give us an update and take a few questions.
Excuse the casual nature of my attire, I'm leaving here and going to a PTO meeting. Not that I don't have my hands full already. It is an, you wanna?
Yeah.
Okay. It's, it's an honor to be in the most happening place in my district right now. If it's happening, it's certainly happening in the Heights. We are, it's an honor for us to serve this community in Springfield to assure that the issues of the residents of Peoria Heights are always at the forefront of our minds. And certainly, it's an honor and a privilege to work with Mayor Phelan, Chief Sutton, and the array of trustees that you have working on your behalf. I know that the vision in just in my time of being in office, the vision for what the Heights can grow to has really been an amazing thing to see unfold. And it is certainly my honor and privilege to be able to serve you and be sure to bring back those necessary resources to continue to help Peoria Heights be the gem that it truly is right here in central Illinois. Speaking around the things that are happening on, the significant work that's gonna be going on on Galena Road and for a community this size to be getting that kind of road project. It is no small thing for a community this size to be getting a 70 million, almost $70 million road project that is gonna continue to help generations beyond. It's, again, we went through, we've gone through some very significant, significantly challenging years in Illinois State Government and it is certainly past time to be able to bring you all some good news. So, again, I'm here with my partner in the Senate, Senator Kaler, and we'll be open for any questions that you may have after he speaks.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the trustees for inviting us and to the citizens. I echo everything that Jahan said, we're so proud to be able to represent you in Springfield. But I think that Peoria Heights represents kind of a synergy that really is hopefully lifting and propelling the other parts of our community. Quite frankly, I think it's gonna rub off and the whole area's gonna be better for it. But, and this started to happen even before Kim Blickenstaff came on the scene. I mean, certainly, he has done a great job of coming back home and investing into the community that he loves. But there's also a spirit here that helps to propel what you're doing. So, I commend you. The projects, I mean, the fun part of our job is being able to, you know, pass a huge capital bill and have projects like the improvements on 29 take place. But also, and Police Chief and City Manager Sutton, you'll be happy with this, you're gonna receive probably more than double your motor fuel tax. And that will help you. I see the road that you have improved. I drive through Peoria Heights every day, probably. And that improvement was a nice, not only for fixing the potholes, but just aesthetically, it's a nice improvement. But this is a community on the move and we're gonna be right in there with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your leadership. Are you able to take some questions?
Sure.
If you'd just raise your hand, folks, and fire away. Anyone have questions? Maybe, I know some of you called about questions on Route 29 specifically, so.
Not all at once, so. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, yes, I live on 29, right on 29. So, my question is, I have several, and I need to watch your job, so I can't do anything else. When is the project gonna start? That's one of my questions, do you know?
No, I don't.
Senator, just so everyone at home, can, we have a lot of people watching.
Sure, sure.
If you could repeat the question.
The question was, when is the project on Route 29 gonna start? And the project, just so you know, is from Gardner Lane down to where the 150 is. And it's gonna probably coincide with the McLuggage Bridge replacement. So, I'm guessing that that's, the bridge replacement's probably scheduled for, to begin next year.
Next year.
And I would guess that maybe the Route 29 shortly after that. It's, there's gotta be some engineering done, although they've done some of that already. This is a, when we pass a capital bill, like $45 billion capital bill, it doesn't happen in one or two years. This is a six-year to a 10-year project. So, I would guess the timing on that would be within a two-year timeframe.
Okay, do you have any specifics? Can you share anything like typical level of responsibility on that, right? So, we have a turn lane, we have a stop line, do you have?
Well, I'll just share with you some of the conversations we've had with the mayor and with IDOT. And that is that it'll be five lanes, five lanes, so that there's a turn lane, you know, where it narrows in that part that goes by where the, you know, the water company is, that's, that's kind of a difficult area. And, you know, part of it is just to make sure that traffic has, that there's not safety hazards or anything like that. So, there'll be a turn lane in the middle there. There may be some turn lanes that, if there's room, to put them for right-hand turns as well. But I'm not an engineer and I can only tell you what IDOT has told me. But they'll, they'll certainly come and present, you know, before, you know, the village board here and before you as citizens what their plans are. So, this is gonna be a very transparent process.
One of the benefits, one of the benefits that we have from this region is the fact that the Department of Transportation Secretary is also from the Peoria area. It is, his name is Omar Osman. It's the first time, I believe, in our history that we have had an actual IDOT secretary who has been from this area, who has a sensitivity to the issues that we have on a local level. And so, the issue around Galena Road has been around for many, many years. And I remember, and, you know, we were in this famous meeting that shall remain anonymous, that Director Osman, Secretary Osman was a part of, right? And so, many of the issues, unlike maybe some, unlike some of the projects in other areas, the actual Secretary of Transportation is very aware of many of the local concerns around this project. And so, I think that we are in a really good position to be able to communicate any concerns as they may come up along this process.
So, how do I, what would you tell me, what would you tell me to do as far as calling questions that I have? I want to, I want safe communication.
What I would say is certainly remain in contact with Senator Kaler and myself. Certainly, you know, I would say email, myself, Senator Kaler, Mayor Phelan. And we will continuously be in contact, not only with the IDOT District Director, but also the Secretary of Transportation.
Yeah, and I would, I would just suggest maybe Mayor be the first contact. And if you want, if you feel that the need is there, we can always arrange for a meeting for IDOT Region 4 to come here and to make a presentation of what they have at that point, so.
Good idea.
Marshall, you've contacted me in the past. You can continue to call me and I can give you updates as well. And you have my direct number.
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah, we will work, we're working together on this as a team, so.
Yep.
Yeah. Good. Mayor, does it have any other questions?
The Board, do the Board have any questions?
No, I just think, I think it's a great thing. We've been trying for a very long time to get 29 and IDOT, trying to get them to work together, us and them. So, I really think it's a great thing. This is, this is gonna be huge for us. And we have a lot of activity going on above the hill, but below the hill, this is, this is an eye-opener. I can't wait, 'cause there's a lot of things that we could do below the hill. For the people that live below the hill, at least get them like a gas station or something so they don't have to drive clear up here. It's, it's an opening that I can't wait for it to happen.
Yeah. I don't wanna steal all the mayor's thunder, but there's some big plans going on and I think it's gonna be very exciting.
Yes.
It's gonna really tie the two areas together, the below-the-hill and above-the-hill area from what just discussions I've been involved in.
Yeah.
I don't know whether those are, are public at this point, but there's, there's some exciting things going on here.
For sure.
And people are gonna be attracted to this area. I think that, you know, with, with some of the housing opportunities you have, I mean, this is, this is the place to be.
Hundred percent.
Well, and you brought up housing, Senator. Before you got here, we had a public hearing on expanding the TIF and BDD. And so, we really want to incentivize neighborhoods. And both of you have helped us get in contact with DCEO. And we're gonna be applying for some housing grants from them and exploring every possible opportunity. So, we, we know that Illinois has faced some challenges and central Illinois has, has too because of the Caterpillar announcement. But we really hope that our team, and you two really lead our team here in the region, that we can help the entire Peoria area come out of this, these difficult times and to really lead a resurgence of this great area, not only Peoria Heights, but this great central Illinois that we all call home. So, again, we're proud to have you two leading the team.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. We're proud of you as well. You're, you're doing a great job.
I just wanna add to Trustee Carter's comment that the development down there on 29 will help slow down that traffic because
Yes.
Those poor people down there, they're taking their lives in their hands every time they go out on that road. And it seems like, or trying, but it seems like they kinda like being ignored down below the hill. It's nice to see something going that way. 'Cause we got a lot of property down there that can be developed.
Yeah.
And help them out.
I mean, this, as you know, this is, at least just in the time that I've been around, this is cer, this project has certainly been over a decade
Yeah.
In the making, over a decade. And so, it's exciting to be able to, you know, still be around to see it actually coming to fruition.
And that's really thanks to the two of you. So, thank you very much.
Oh.
I just don't think this would've happened without your support.
Thank you.
We enjoy the partnership.
Absolutely. And I, I just wanted to say to, to the residents here, I'm sure that you do, which is why you're here, but the visionary leadership that has been, that has been shown by the mayor, the trustees, city manager, Chief Sutton, it is second to nothing that I've seen in this region. And so, during, you know, when you, economies, they always go through ebbs and flows. And what I have seen, particularly in the last decade, is rather Mayor Phelan was Township Trustee or Mayor, I mean, it is always, anytime we're talking, we're talking the Heights. I don't care what's going on, rather, it's a, you know, political function, it's a policy function, Peoria Heights is always a part of the conversation. And that's the kind of leadership that you have to have at the helm of your community if you wanna see your community grow. So, I wanted to say that to you in front of the citizens this evening. I mean, you, you're really in good hands. And thank you.
Thanks again. And when the Governor was here, he mentioned he wanted to come for a visit, so I'm gonna ask you two to, again, to facilitate that and we'll welcome him here.
Great.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we would be at a presentation of a donation to the Fire Department by Advanced Medical Transport. And Trustee Weisenberg, you wanna go down and help accept this, please? Josh?
Mayor Phelan?
Danny? Okay.
Mayor Phelan and council members, I just wanna give you a quick update and a brief explanation of this medical device that we're presenting today. When we started caring for the village about five years ago now, we were also on the verge of a big push toward increased cardiac arrest resuscitation rates because sudden cardiac arrest is the number-one killer of people over 40 in America. And so, we began a program called Race to the Top. And five years down the road, we, last year, achieved some of the highest cardiac arrest resuscitation numbers in the entire nation. And it was partially due to the help from this device that we deployed as a test in Peoria last year and had great success with it. And now, we want to push it out to other communities that we partner with as well. And the Peoria, or the Peoria Heights Fire Department attended Resuscitation Academy, which is led by Lauren Emanuelson here, who's our subject matter expert and the head of our Race to the Top program. And as well, the Peoria Heights Police Department have all, for years now, maintained the healthcare provider CPR certification levels as well. So, we have great partners in this village. We very much appreciate the opportunity to serve all of you. And so, we'd like to present the village with this device that greater facilitates bystander CPR and helps to save lives. And if any of you have any specific questions, of course, Lauren is our subject matter expert and she can tell you all about it.
Well, we appreciate your generosity.
Thank you.
I don't see anyone from the Fire Department, so thanks for accepting that, Trustee Weisenberg. Is there anything you wanna add?
Could we ask how it works? Why is it so effective?
Absolutely. I'll let Lauren answer that.
So, this is called the Rescue Pump. It's the first of its kind. It's an active compression, active decompression device. So, normally, when we do CPR, you've heard the motto, "Push hard, push fast." We've never really done anything to help refill the heart other than lift our hands off the chest to allow the chest to passively recoil. For the first time in history, we're gonna continue to that, "Push hard," but it's also got a suction mechanism on there, so we can lift straight up. And that's that active decompression device. So, pushing hard helps to circulate all the healthy blood out to the periphery and up to the brain. And then, active decompression and lifting allows all of that blood flow to come back to the heart. So, the next time we push hard, push fast, we're pushing a full heart instead of a halfway-filled heart. What it does is it not only helps with good compression out, but it helps to pull fluid down from the brain. So, those patients that we do get a pulse back on, their chances of surviving and being neurologically intact and functional increases proportionally. So, the FDA approval study on this device, it increased survivability after one year from sudden cardiac arrest for adult medical cardiac arrest patients by 49%. And we've seen, we've seen numbers mirror that. We doubled the national average last year for survivability in the city of Peoria where we deployed this.
Congratulations.
And then, the Fire Department, like Josh, that has already joint-trained in our Resuscitation Academy, that's gonna be a educational process that we're gonna be doing every year. We had a really good turnout in Peoria Heights, so really thank them for their collaboration with us.
So, you get certified in that also?
Um, the certification is just a normal CPR certification. This kinda takes it above and beyond bounds. So, it's more evidence-based and data-driven approach. There is no certification class. It's a pit crew-style resuscitation approach, which started in Seattle and has kind of migrated throughout the nation.
Interesting.
Thank you so much.
Can that be used in conjunction with the defibrillator, too?
It can. So, this is the compression. All it does is it replaces your hands or it replaces, you've seen probably some of the automated, the Lucas device or the Autopulse, the automated devices. Those do really good compressions, but they only generate 40% blood flow to the brain. This generates near-normal blood flow to the brain.
Wow, amazing.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we would be at comments from the audience. Anyone, you wanna please come up to the microphone and give your name and address? Okay, comments, oh, welcome. Welcome, Mr. Becker.
My name is Jim Becker. I reside at 2015 Grandview Terrace, Peoria Heights. I've been a resident of the Heights for 43 years. And I'd like to touch on a little bit of a hot-button issue. I'll be as brief as I possibly can. Thank you for allowing me to address the Board this evening. I would like to bring to the village board's attention the actions of two other enlightened village boards in this area, one being Morton, Illinois, the other one being El Paso, Illinois. Both boards have refused to allow the insanity of recreational marijuana in their communities. In both cases, they have made the sale and the use of illegal marijuana within these communities continue to be illegal. In addition, the city of East Peoria is considering the same referendum at this time. I would hope that Peoria Heights would follow suit with these enlightened communities and do the same, ban the use of recreational marijuana in the Heights. We've accomplished so much and come so far, we don't need this. Whatever small revenue stream that would be created by this nonsense would be far outweighed by the damage caused both financially, medically, physically, emotionally, and to our community. In addition, the safety problems created by impaired people, whether they be pedestrians or vehicle operators. I would hope the village of Peoria Heights would see the wisdom in keeping this plague out of our community. Like other enlightened communities, we don't need or want this insanity in the Heights. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Public comment going once, going twice, public comments closed. We'll move on to item 10, which is trustee reports. First is Public Works, Trustee Carter.
Thank you. Just, I just wanna remind everybody, Dave's not here. And so, Mike, wanna come up? And maybe, we got, talk about well-11, you're saying that it's still?
Yeah, it's just ongoing. They're still working on it to rehab it, so, no date of completion yet, so, but they're still working on it hard to get it going, so.
Okay. And then, on Ds, we're, that's?
Ds, we're still waiting on the timeframe of Dylan to give us when they can come work on it. They've been pretty busy, but we're gonna get it going here shortly, so, get that pipeline and get it, the flow going there.
Okay. I think that's enough. Pod on Glenn, you're gonna?
Yeah, tomorrow, we're gonna stripe Glenn out here ourselves. And there's a blacktop going on, too, so, just different stuff before it gets cold. So, we're trying to get done, so.
Mike, the EPA audit?
Oh, yeah, we had an EPA audit with erosion issues around and stuff. We did pretty good. There's a couple corrections, but everything fell into place and we passed pretty good. I mean, there's just a couple things I had to do, but everything seemed, went good. Thanks, and Patrick Meyer was involved with us, too, so.
It was a team effort. Peoria Heights and Morton were selected to be audited this year, so we started that process, but it went well.
Mm-hmm. Everything went smooth.
Good job. Did you have something? I didn't have something to say about the striping. I had several people approach me and tell me what a great job the company that, that you found
Oh, Prospect, yeah.
That did that and that, and I don't know, 'cause I didn't see it happening, but they said that they thought that they did that by hand.
Yeah, everything was by hand. They, thermoplastic, they call it, and they melt it in a truck and the guy fills up the machine and then he pushed it all the way up the road and they, it's all by their, you know, got two guys were lining it and one guy was striping, so.
Amazing, okay.
It went pretty smooth, 'cause we, we seal coat everything Tuesday, we fog coated everything Thursday, and we striped it Monday. So, everything went good and all the businesses were happy with it. And one thing I will praise on is I had the mayor from Collinsville call me, and he was up here in the area last weekend. And he was like, "What did you do to the street out there?" And he wanted to know, "Fog coat," 'cause it almost looks like blacktop, fresh blacktop, but yeah. So, I called him back and chatted with him for a little bit, but he just praised Peoria Heights for, he's like, "Wow." Then the striping, like you was saying, really lifted it up, so, that's kinda interesting.
It's nice.
I don't talk to too many mayors, just Mike usually, but.
Cheryl, anything else?
I think that's it, isn't that Mike?
Yeah, that's it.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Okay, we would be at building and property maintenance, Trustee Mariscal.
Um, really don't have a lot here. I did get an email from Chief Sutton regarding the air conditioning unit that was put in at the police station. Everything went well and appears to be working good and keep our police officers cool in this hot weather, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else, Diane?
Um, no, I think we're still debating on this rock thing, so we'll come back to that another time, but.
Okay. Next would be economic and community development, Trustee Kazim.
Yes, well, I wanna report that earlier this month, on August 7, we had the opportunity to meet with Colleen Callahan, the Director of the IDNR, which is the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, in her offices in Springfield. And this meeting was facilitated by Mayor and it was made possible really because of his long-term relationship with Mrs. Callahan. So, thank you so much, Mayor. The village has been pursuing options for possible future development of the riverfront and hopefully making this part of this, this part of the state a major ecotourism draw. This initiative includes land owned by the village along the river between Gardner Lane and the McLuggage Bridge, which will become more attractive and with the renewed infrastructure made possible from the grant we heard about earlier from Senator Kaler and Representative Gordon. I'm happy to report that the meeting was very productive and we were met with a positive response. The IDNR seems eager to cooperate. We met Director Callahan's entire team and we're now more educated on the channels we must go through in order to pursue these plans. So, it's really exciting. We can pursue that. And that's it?
Anything else?
No. Thank you.
Questions? Okay. Administration, Trustee Gett.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a meeting with the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity to discuss some of the housing needs in the Heights and that there's an opportunity to, for low-to-moderate income rehabilitation grants. So, in the spirit of what we were talking about earlier tonight, this could kinda go right along with it, we are also working with Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, who would help administer, administer the grant. Details are still in its infancy, however, we'll be meeting with DCEO in Tri-County within the next month to move forward with a possible plan. Details and timelines will be brought to the Board as they are finished. Do you want to add anything there?
You've covered it. Thank you, trustee.
Well, I would, if you don't mind, Trustee Gett, I would just add that a lot of times the development gets a lot of attention, but really, we are focusing the majority of our energy on housing and neighborhoods. And this grant with DCEO would be a half-million-dollar grant, which has a lot of latitude where we could use it in many ways to help people who are in a lower-income or middle-income bracket. So, this is really exciting and we're gonna do everything we can in this competitive process to try and get that grant. So, we're gonna work very hard on that. Jeff, is there anything else you have?
No, that's it.
All right. Anything else under administration? Okay. Let's move on to Fire, Trustee Weisenberg.
Thanks, Mayor. There's a few statistics that the Fire Chief would like for me to share with the Board. In July, they had a total of 12 fire calls and 69 EMS calls, or a total of 81 calls and EMS responses in July of 2019. Year-to-date, they have 567 fire and EMS responses. So, the Fire Chief wanted me to relay that to the Board. They did a few public relations events in July of 2019, Grandview Neighborhood Fourth of July Celebration. They participated in the Fourth of July Parade in West Peoria. And they did the Movie Under the Stars and Fire Truck display.
Anything else, Trustee Weisenberg?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Police, Trustee DeBoer.
Um, the Peoria Heights Police Penitent Association is going to be having their annual fundraiser on September 28 from 1 to 5 at 4:00 hours in conjunction with Slowly Barbecue. on September 28th from 1:00 to 5:00 at Ford's, in conjunction with Slowly a Barbecue. They will have bouncy houses, free souvenir items for the kids, a dump tank, a 50/50, a parrot's speech equipment expo. A portion of all sales will be given to the Benevolent Association, and that will also have a concert series that night, too, with the Joe Steen Band. Someone should come on and check it out.
Anything else, trustee DeVore?
I would just like to make a comment, a comment about the good work our police department did last week, catching the little burglars going up and down and vandalizing cars and everything. I especially liked the comment of why they ran their fake hide-and-seek, but good job, good cooperation with, between our police department and the city of Peoria. They worked together and took care of it.
Thank you, trustee Gett. One thing I wanted to mention about the fundraiser that the police department, they give back to scholarships to the school every year, so some of that money does come back into the, to the, the community and the school, so I think that should be noted.
Trustee Gett actually beat me to it. My personal thanks and appreciation to the police department, but would you comment on a couple of the recent arrests that have occurred and been made public?
Over the last six months, we've made numerous arrests. Most of them did not make the paper. These last two have, because if, if you read, they were associated with a larger group out of Peoria. But this has been going on for the last, I mean, at least six months. We've made like more than just the six arrests, but the guys are out there continually doing their job. Obviously, with our geography surrounded by Peoria, we're a little bit different. We're not Chillicothe, Washington, we're not rural. We're like a district of Peoria, but our guys do a great job of keeping the element out, and I'm very proud of that. That's why we have as many cops on the streets that we do, so my ass off to them. I know they hear that every day, but you should be very proud of this group. Majority have been with me the 20 years I've been chief. I would say majority have been 18, 19, 20 years, so you should be proud of this group. They do a great job, so. But I do thank, thank the board, the mayor for all the praise, and I will pass all that on, so, thank you.
And just one other side note, as Chief pointed out, we do have an awful lot of police on the street for a small community. They're paid for primarily by sales tax. We don't, the, all the property tax goes for pensions, but the, it's sales tax that helps pay for the police and the services, and we're, we're lucky to have a fine chief and a good police department, so thanks for that. And trustee DeVore, was there anything else you had?
No.
Okay. So we'll move on to old business. The first is approval of ordinance 2019-1596, an ordinance restricting parking on that portion of Euclid Avenue between Kingman Avenue to Park Place in the village of Peoria Heights. Trustee DeVore asks for a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2019-1596.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, this, we talked about this in several meetings, so this is where we have come to the agreement, our compromise, I would say, to reduce parking on one side of Kingman's, on Euclid, between Kingman and Park Place, because the vision there when we were driving was kind of a hazard. So we have now decided that they would, you can now park on the right side of the street, leaving the visibility open on the left. We have noticed that the visibility is better in that area at the right now, so now we just have to pass the ordinance.
Questions for trustee DeVore, discussion?
I would just like to compliment the board that this started out in one fashion, but there were differences of opinion on how to accomplish this. I think the board worked really well together to come up with this compromise, and I want to thank you all for, for your work on that.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
All right, that passes, and thank you. Next is an update on village-owned properties. Mr. Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. Over the last couple of months, we've been talking about these five village-owned properties. We had a developer approach me regarding them, and we, we discussed that. The reason why I want to talk about this tonight is because over the last week, we've had a lot of renewed interest. I've had a handful of developers approach me about these properties, so what I'm recommending tonight is that we, we advertise these properties and go out for bid. That would be my recommendation, because there is a lot of interest, and everybody that I've talked to, they want to build on these lots. They want to build small, affordable housing on these lots. So going back to what we've heard earlier in the meetings, I think this is just one component of that. It's a win-win, but I do think because of the interest, we should go out individually and for, and advertise and go, go out for bids, so.
So starting this conversation, as everyone probably knows, that we acquired these properties because there were demolitions of homes on these parcels, and we mow these. It costs the village a lot of time and effort to keep the properties up. Public Works has to mow the properties. We had one builder, developer, come in and express an interest in, in the properties, but as that became public, then there were other people who have come forward to say, "You know what? There's a demand for housing in Peoria Heights, and there's been a, an interest by other folks, so we thought it would be best just to put this out there and let, have an even playing field, and let people bring proposals to the board on, on what they want to do," and that expectation would be that they build houses on these sites, so that's what we're trying to accomplish.
So would we advertise it? We're going to advertise?
Yes, it would be a legal process.
Okay, and we're going to put stipulations in there that we don't want them to build a house and rent it? We don't want to, to rent it. We want them to build a house, have it sold to a family?
Correct. We can, we'll put those stipulations in there.
We put those stipulations in there?
Correct.
Well, we will approve that when, you'll have, trustee Carter, you'll have the opportunity to add to or take away what the administration brings to us, but that suggestion is good, so now he's heard, he's heard that.
Yes, they were given to you last meeting, but I do have another list. I'll share it with you after the meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
And then we would have the ability to accept or reject those proposals when they come in, correct, council?
Correct.
All right.
And then how are we going to price them?
We're just asking for people to make a bid.
So I can make a bid for $500, and my bid's the highest?
Yeah.
Well, we could accept that or reject it.
If your bid is the highest, we don't have to sell.
All right.
So right now, with, without any home on these properties, they're not generating any real tax revenue at all, and to me, to have someone build a home on that property, start collecting property tax and having people living on those properties and not having Public Works mow them, I think it's a win-win. I would...
But can we just start? Can we start with like what we have in it? I mean, some of them, we might have a couple grand in it. Can we at least say the lowest bid is, you know, a couple grand, or?
The, the way the statute works, you, you just have to request bids. We can't say, you know, anybody that wants to bid something over a certain amount, we just got to ask for bids.
Okay.
You know, hopefully, people know what they're worth. I mean...
Can we get them? We have comparable land value?
We don't, we don't know until we ask.
Do we have comparable land value, I mean, information, though? It's just our own information.
We have full-on appraisals of all of these lots.
Okay, okay, good.
Yeah.
So can we get that information?
Yeah, MAI certified appraisals.
Every, every lot was just appraised in the last couple of weeks.
Could we get that information?
You sure can. We'll send it out to the board.
So have we abandoned the 80% then?
Yes, at this point, we have.
So we could get the full value?
Yes, yes.
You know, and we thought we could...
We have a choice.
Put these out individually, but I think it would be best to put them out collectively, because some are more desirable than, than others, and by doing it this way, I, I think it'll, not force, it will require whoever bids on these to take all.
And trustee Carter, going back to your scenario, that's why Ellen Cord is back on this, because with the stipulations that we put on there, he decided to go another route. That's why we have this back on our list, so.
Yeah.
That's the example you're referring to, but we will cover that as well.
The final decision will rest with all of you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We would be at new business then. The first is approval of ordinance 2019-1600, an ordinance to establish a date for a public hearing for the First Amendment to the Peoria Heights Tax Increment Financing, TIF District Number Two. Trustee Kazam, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve this ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, back to you, trustee.
Just to reiterate, this is just establishing a date for a public hearing. We're not making a vote on the TIF district this evening, so I just want to make sure that everybody understands that.
Questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next, approval of resolution 2019-7, a resolution directing the filing of copies of regulations to be adopted by reference. Update to the building codes. Trustee Gett, I'd ask for a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the update for the building codes.
And a second?
A second.
Okay. Go ahead, Jeff.
Basically, we do this every few years, kind of a housekeeping to update our building codes. They do get behind, if council would like to address it.
Sure, sure. We, we actually haven't updated them in quite a while.
No. Go ahead. Yeah, we haven't updated them since 2011. Every three years, they come out with a new code. Is that correct, council?
And we're still operating off a 2006 code, which is, you know, technically 13 years old, so.
Right.
But just to be clear, this is a two-step process. The first step is, we've got to put those books publicly available and let the public know that they're available to look at and comment on before we adopt an ordinance that says henceforth to 2018 or 20, depending on what year for each of the different codes, is enforced. So this is really step one. Now, all of these, the updated versions of the books are on file with the clerk, and public has access to them at Village Hall, and that happens for a month, and then, once they've been on file for a month, we can adopt an ordinance that actually incorporates those codes and updates the code. So this is really a precursor to that.
And going through those codes, there was one part that I do want removed, and I'm sure the board would agree with this, is in that these codes is a mandatory sprinkler system for every new construction, which majority of the, the municipalities that are adopting these codes are taking that out. So I would, I would recommend that we do the same and not require a sprinkler system for residential. It can be an option.
We wouldn't do that tonight, would we, council?
No, no, that would be...
We, we would not, but, but we have done that for, I believe, every municipality that we've updated the code on has opted out of the residential sprinklers, and, and even the ord, we've already prepared the ordinance so that if anybody wants to see it, and it does have that section deleted.
So you've, you've heard what the staff administrators' recommendation would be on that, be, be thinking about that, and when we get to the point of adopting.
That was kind of like when we decided not to have windows in the bathroom. Was that, was that part of that?
Well, that, that was, that was our landlord, you know, ordinance for rental properties. This is the building code that applies village-wide.
Oh.
And I can tell you that sprinkler systems in residences is basically cost prohibitive.
Right.
Yeah, and did receive a phone call from the Realtors Association concerned about that, watching our, watching our meetings, and asked if we were going to follow suit, and I said that I will be presenting that to the board in that fashion, so.
Well, we have access to these amendments to that, or are these codes that we can look at them?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. They're upstairs now, Diane, yes.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, approval of ordinance 2019-1601, an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 8B, Section 1 of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights for the purpose of amending the duties of village treasurer. Trustee Gett?
I make a motion to approve the amending of the duties of the village treasurer.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, trustee Gett.
Okay, this is basically step one of, two steps, because the next one's going to be the second one. We don't, we needed to clarify the duties of the village's treasurer, exactly what they're supposed to do, because the treasurer and the one we want to talk about next, bookkeeper, kind of cross over each other.
Right.
Is that about right?
Yeah, absolutely. If you don't mind me...
Since this is a recommendation by you, council...
Yes, absolutely. I'll take ownership of this. At the last meeting, we talked about the fact that the treasurer ordinance that identifies the duties of treasurer was from 1914. Obviously, a lot has changed since then, and, you know, what happens is that you lose sight of the ordinance and things just operate based on inertia and the way things have been done. So it was really long overdue to update that. What the ordinance in front of you for the treasurer duties is state-specific duties, supervision of the financial, finances, reconciliation of the bank accounts, and monthly and annual reports. That's really the, the core function of the treasurer. It's what the treasurer should be doing, and it's consistent with the state statute on the office of treasurer. The day-to-day accounting entries and accounting functions are handled by the bookkeeper, as trustee Gett said. That's coming next, but this would be the first step in modernizing our treasurer and, you know, basically the financial accounting functions for the village.
Thank you. Questions for council or discussion on the motion?
That's in appointee position two, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I said.
Anyone else? Go ahead, madam clerk.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next, approval of resolution 2019-8, a resolution approving job description for the village bookkeeper. Trustee Gett, I'd ask for a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the description of the bookkeeper.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Go ahead, trustee Gett.
Pretty much what we said in the first one. Do you, do you want to go on some more?
Sure. I, I will add to this. This is not a recent thing. The bookkeeper job description has been around for probably several months at least. No small amount of effort went into creating job descriptions across the, the village. This one in particular, by Eric Christian and HR Fit. Everybody remembers Eric. You know, a lot of thought and effort went into it. We've just never formally adopted it, and the timing is perfect when we're revisiting the duties of the treasurer, and really the interplay between treasurer and bookkeeper. It seemed like an appropriate time to handle these together in order like this. So again, the, the job description is not new, it's relatively recent, but we're just addressing it and formally asking the board to formally approve it at this time, based on the change to the treasurer.
The only question I have on, on the description, and I guess I didn't notice this when he did it, but to maintain all the personnel files, should that be with the administrator?
That is correct. I do have the personnel files, as far as all the staff here. Those are locked in my office.
Trustee Mariscal, I think what it's referencing is I maintain the payroll personnel files, so...
I saw that on another line, but I didn't understand what this one was, all the personnel files. So, I just wanted to make sure that we are keeping those confidential.
I do not have access to the disciplinary files. I just have payroll-relevant information and benefit information.
Okay. That's all. That's the only question I have.
Anyone? Any other questions, Trustee Mariscal? Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Okay. That passes. Next is approval of a server quote for the police station in the amount of $8,214. Trustee DeVor?
What you have in your packet is...
Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Sorry, motion approved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. What you have in your packet is the service agreement for the server for the police station that we talked about at our last meeting. This quote with the project total does include the labor and the server itself. This is a budgeted and scheduled item. The Police Department was supposed to get a server last year, but actually just repaired what they had and held off for a year due to our budget, and so this is their scheduled time, too, now. If you want to add anything?
Thank you.
No, you covered it. On our scheduled plan, it was to be replaced last year due to the addition of body cameras and everything else to our department, but we did hold off due to the budget. So, this is, again, we're about a year behind, but the guys did a great job of maintaining what we had, and so, we definitely need this now.
Questions?
Does this give you more room for storage? Does it make it go faster? I guess I don't know with a server.
It is more storage, Trustee Mariscal, and, you know, as far as every, we timestamp, we dictate when, you know, when we purge, you know, as far as body cams, dash cams, reports, and we were creative way of doing that when we had smaller servers. But, now that we have this, it'll be a little simpler. Plus, we're also in a new system with ADSI, so we're connected directly to Peoria PD, and also the dispatch consolidation comes into that. We're also linked to the courthouse, or I mean, the County Jail with the booking photo, so there's so much more information that we have now than we used to have, so that's a part of it as well.
Okay. And then, this $8,288, that's just like a one-time fee, then, or do we continue to pay parole?
No, that's a one-time fee, but we do have a service agreement village-wide with parole that covers everything up here and the computers and down there. But, this is just a one-time fee, and talking to their IT people and our, the representative from parole that we use, which he is outstanding at what he does, this should be good for a long time for us. I would say this at least 10 years, if not longer, so.
And as I understand it, the server had an increased storage capacity for the body cam data that you have to store now?
Correct.
How long do you hold that data?
Everything's different depending on call. It's into the system, and we set it in the system. So, for example, if it's something minor like a missing bicycle, of course, we will purge that a lot sooner than we would shots-fired call or any domestic battery or any Class X felony, so.
Okay.
Okay. Ready for the question? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
That passes. Next is approval of a server quote for the police station in the amount of $41,984. Trustee DeVor?
Motion to approve the police vehicles.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Go ahead.
Also, we've discussed this before, these, all of our vehicles mostly are on a rotation. So, this year, we have traded in one and are adding one new car. This was state bid. It is scheduled and budgeted as well.
Thank you.
Do you want to add to that?
No, you covered it. I think going back last year, the trustees that were on the Board last year remember that, you know, we bypassed buying two vehicles that were scheduled last year, black and